Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on May 5th, 2022. And let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a very short agenda in front of us this evening, but is there any, I don't think there's any changes. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as posted and consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in fair the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion, the answer carries. We have an approved agenda. And first up on our approved agenda, under public recognitions and presentations, the Lacey History Month and Historian of the Year. Erin? Is that you?
All right. The big one goes forward, I'm guessing. Well, thank you, Mayor Ryder, and council members, and those of you viewing from the comfort of your home. Please, uh, sorry. Wow, it's been a while since I've been in front of people. This is weird.
Don't worry.
So, thank you so much for joining us in celebrating Lacey History Month. I'd also like to recognize the members of the Lacey Historical Commission. Hopefully, some of them are watching as well. But they are Eric Ebel, Alan Tyler, Kimberly Getz, Jim Keo, Sarah Thirtyacre, and David Black. Before we announce the 2022 Historian of the Year, I thought it might be fun to share with you a little bit from our April History Talks program, so that you could get a sense of what those are about. Um, oh, there we are. Um, so before, uh, gosh, wow, I used to be so good at this. I don't know what's happened.
That's all right.
I am sure that many of you know that Lacey was once a popular vacation destination, and if you didn't, well, it's true. Gwinwood was more than, more, one of more than 20 resorts that popped up around Lacey, which was a regional attraction for resorts of all types, particularly in the 1920s and 30s. Gwinwood still exists today at the southern end of Hicks Lake as a retreat and event center. So check out these then and now pictures. I just love this gorgeous picture on the left, the historic view, the glassiness of that lake is just so beautiful. This is what Gwinwood looked like in 1902, before it was a resort. Gwen Hicks, part of a pioneer family that arrived by way of the Oregon Trail in the 1850s, built this summer home for his family and friends to enjoy. Gwen was quite the character and truly lived a full life. He was a member of the group that drafted the state constitution. He was the state printer, and he was heavily involved in politics. He was married five times, became a widow three times, divorced once, and left his fifth wife a widow. He also lost five of his seven children during his lifetime, but the worst tragedy of his life was probably a car accident in 1915. He was driving with his wife, their two young daughters, and two of his wife's relatives. Everyone else but him died in the car that day, and he was critically injured. After this tragic event, he was determined to see Gwinwood turned into something that was good for the community. He tried to lease it or sell it, so that someone else could turn it into a resort, and he even tried to give it away for the benefit of the community. After several failed attempts for someone else to do it, he finally decided the only way it was going to happen is if he did it himself. So, the resort, oh, my, my pictures aren't transitioning the way they're supposed to. Oh, well. So, the resort boasted seclusion, but with a proximity to the city. It had a view of Mount Rainier, excellent fishing, boat, and bathhouses, a roomy social hall with an open fireplace, a wide veranda overlooking the lake, a covered dancing floor and pavilion, and a 30-foot water slide. For more than a decade, Gwinwood was also famously known as the location of the Red Cross Life Saving Institutes to prevent drownings, and people came from all over the country to attend them. And in 1975, it almost became a city of Lacey Park, but that fell through. But in any case, we are still very lucky to have Gwinwood in existence, still in our community today. Some of the buildings still on site are believed to have been built during the resort era, and it is still available to the public for rent and to attend events and programs. And if you haven't been, I highly recommend you do. It's really a beautiful spot. Well, now that you have had a taste of one of our recent history talks, I'd like to share with you what's coming up. On May 10th, we will have a presentation on the Mount St. Helens eruption of 1980. And then we're going to take a break for the summer, like we do every year, but when we come back in the fall, we have a great lineup in the works, including a history of the Bush Homestead, the Olympia Brewing Company, a great man who's going to come talk about donation land claims, another person who's going to come talk about Thurston County railroads, and a lot more, and we hope to see everyone come. Also coming this summer, we're working on a virtual cemetery tour at the Ruttle Pioneer Cemetery, and we'll be bringing in a new traveling exhibit called 1968, The Year That Rocked Washington, which profiles people in Washington from that era, including our own Karen Fraser and Nat and Thelma Jackson. We will also be having a Sasquatch-themed scavenger hunt at the depot, which should be fun for the whole family. And at the museum this summer, you'll be able to enjoy an artifact of the week program highlighting toys from the museum's collection, and there will also be many activities and crafts at the museum throughout the summer. Well, now to the reason why we're here. Another significant part of Lacey History Month is that the Lacey Historical Commission, every year, considers nominations of individuals or organizations who have made a significant contribution to preserve or promote Lacey's history. Recipients of the Lacey Historian of the Year Award have included all the honorees that are listed on the slide, but tonight I wanted to take a moment to recognize the very first Historian of the Year, Shirley J. Jek, who we lost last month. I feel so honored to have been able to know this woman, who was such a force in our community. She served on the Lacey Historical Commission in the 80s, and then, when the Lacey Historical Society was formed, she served a decade on the board, and then a decade as president. And she was the reason for the Memorial Gardens at the Lacey Museum, and she is also the reason that the Safeway today looks like the Lacey School, and that there's a memorial interpretive panel on the side. And Shirley would just come down to the museum so often just to chat, and one of the things that I remember she told me pretty recently was that, "I'm so glad the museum is in good hands, sweetheart." And, wow, what a compliment from such a gracious lady. So today, the Historical Commission would like to present the 2022 Lacey Historian of the Year Award to Seth Huff. Seth was appointed to the Historical Commission in 2017. Although he originally applied for the Parks Board, we're super glad that he ended up on the Historical Commission instead. He stated on his application that his reason for wanting to be on a city commission was to further the stated goal of the City of Lacey to enrich the quality of life for all of our citizens. What a great goal. So, in a few minutes, Jen Burbage will be coming up to say a few words about Seth's time with the commission, so I thought that I would just share a couple of my experiences with him. One of the first of many things that Seth volunteered for was to participate on the ad hoc policy committee. He attended almost every meeting and provided really great feedback. I mean, not the most glorifying of tasks, right, but his contribution was really essential. I think the best thing about Seth is just his willingness to always step up and give 100% to what he was doing for us. At that time, though, I didn't realize how much he was going to save the museum staff at such an important time. At the grand opening of our Sasquatch exhibit, he volunteered to help me out here in council chambers while we had our speaker series for Sasquatch. It was a crazy day, and he just immediately followed me without me asking on my first visitor orientation, and as soon as we were done, he took over inviting visitors in, accepting them with grace and patience and enthusiasm. And so, the next week, when it became really clear that we were going to have to expand museum hours just to keep up, I called him and was like, "Help! Please help me!" I thought of him immediately, and he stepped right up and volunteered every week on our extra day throughout the whole exhibit. We literally could not have done it without him, and his absence on the commission is really sorely missed, but it is truly my honor to name Seth the 2022 Lacey Historian of the Year. And now, if Jen wants to come up and say a few words and present the award, that would be terrific.
Well, thank you. So, we, we wish that Chair Ebel could have been here tonight as well. And I just want to reiterate, it wasn't too long ago when Seth stepped down from the commission, and so I'll reiterate some of the thoughts that I had at that time, which I still have, and that is that Seth doesn't do anything in a minimal way. Everything, I see his wife nodding her head. Everything Seth does, he really puts his heart and soul into, and he really came into the Historical Commission wanting to serve the community, and he did so with all of himself. And he is not, he also is a person who not only was on the Historical Commission, but he gives to the community in other ways as well. And same thing, whatever he sets out to do, he just does such a quality, thoughtful, caring job. And like Erin said, we just really already miss him on the Historical Commission. We just miss your presence and your hard work and your dedication, and I just think that you're so deserving of this award, and I'm so happy that, that we could be here tonight to present that. So, Erin is checking on the, the award itself.
Yeah, I see that.
But in the meantime, I think that Seth would like to say a few words, and Mayor, I don't know if you wanted to as well?
I'll, I'll say a few words. I do remember when you first applied, and you're looking to be on the Parks Board, and we interviewed you, and you were such a great candidate. And we reached out and it's like, "You know what? We really think you'd be great on this store commission, and would you be willing to serve?" And you said yes right away, you know, and you've been such a huge addition to the city of Lacey in a very critical time as we're putting together the museum and cultural center and everything that goes along with that. You know, obviously, all the work that you've volunteered at the museum, and just really proud of everything you've done for the City of Lacey. And when we knew that you were going to have to step off, we knew you were going to leave, you know, a big hole, and that was going to be very difficult to fill, which has been true. So, but just want to thank you so much for your service, everything you've given to the City of Lacey, and right on, we don't know where the reward is, but we'll make sure that we get to you as soon as we find it. You know, we're just getting back in, you know, in person here, so we have to kind of roll with the punches. But come, come on up if you'd like to say a few words.
Mayor Ryder, Deputy Mel Miller, members of the city council, thank you for this honor. I'd like to acknowledge Erin Quinn Valcho for nominating me for this award and the Historical Commission for choosing me Historian of the Year. I stand before you with a humble heart full of gratitude. To my wife, Lacey Park Commissioner Wendy Goodwin, who is in the audience tonight, I thank you for supporting me during my service at the Lacey Historic Commission and my volunteering with the museum. I hope to provide her with the same encouragement, council, as she advises you over the, in the coming years. Lacey's history is full of inspirational stories. In 1960, a local businessman named Mo Lovelace had an innovative idea for a new type of retirement community. Over 60 years later, panorama is the highest standard for quality senior living. In 1966, Bob Bloom developed the South Sound Shopping Center, which changed retail shopping in our county. The general contractor for that site was Al Homan, the first mayor of Lacey when Lacey decided on self-rule later that year. As was mentioned before, the first winner of this award in 2002 was Shirley Jezitz. Shirley passed away last month, as was mentioned. She moved to Lacey with her family on Labor Day of 1960. She made an impact on Lacey as an educator teaching at a local elementary schools, and history, and a historian establishing the Lacey School Memorial. While these stories fill us with pride, there were many doubts in the beginning. It was often said these things cannot get done in Lacey. Currently, we, as a community, are working on a new museum and cultural center that some, both publicly and privately, say cannot be done. It will be finished. In Lacey, we do not suffer from the tyranny of low expectations. Rather, we achieve what we dream and set the standards of excellence for others to follow. Our new museum and cultural center will be a destination of inspiration to the next Mo Lovelace, to the next Bob Bloom, the next Shirley Jezitz. And when opportunities and needs arise in our community, we know the work of inspiring others promotes legacy, and they will fill the need. So tonight, I accept this award, not just for myself, but for all for who hear my voice, as a reaffirmation to protecting Lacey's historical landscape. Let our story inspire the next generation of innovators, educators, and civic leaders. Thank you.
And we'd like to shake your hand, too.
And, and while he's doing that, this is a good example, you can see why he was nominated for Historian of the Year and why the commission selected him. So eloquently stated, and thank you so much. We super apologize for not having the physical award tonight. We do have it. We just don't have it, like, right, exactly right here. So we will hand deliver that to you. So, thank you.
Yes, please. You know, I'm, I'm sure Shirley would be very proud of you right now, Seth. You know, she, she was such an inspiration, and it's very fitting that, you know, she was our first award recipient, and you're our current award recipient. And I see so much similarity between you two and your, and your, and your love for Lacey, and also your love to get the museum and cultural center built as well. So, thank you for that. I think, you know, Seth is a great example of why Lacey is such a special place. The people who volunteer and give back to this community really shows up in, in who we are as a city. So, so thank you so much for what you've done. Let's see, next up on our agenda is public comments on items on the agenda, and we do have one person who's pre-registered to speak via Zoom, and so hopefully we can bring that person in.
I'm sorry, Mayor, it doesn't look like Mr. Prevost is on the Zoom right now.
Okay, well, let me know if it shows up, and we might try to fit him in later. But with that, we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is under Proclamations, and it's, of course, Lacey History Month proclamation, and I will get started with that. So, City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas in 1852, the area now known as the Lacey Historic Neighborhood was homesteaded by industrious seller named Isaac Wood, who eventually became the first brewmaster in the territory north of the Columbia River, and provided the inspiration for Lacey's original name of woodland. And?
Whereas by 1891, the Northern Pacific Railroad added a rail line through the growing community, which now boasted a sulky racing track, hotel, train depot, school district, platted subdivision, and a post office. And?
Whereas in 1891, a post office was established with the unique name of Lacey to avoid confusion with another town in the state.
Whereas in 1895, St. Martin's College opened its doors and on its campus. In 1922, KGY Radio received one of the earliest radio licenses in the state of Washington. And?
Whereas by the 1920s, with the advent of the automobile, Lacey had become well-known as a resort community, over time featuring 19 lakeside resorts offering swimming, diving, roller skating, dancing, and exciting water shoots. And?
Whereas the City of Lacey, through a vote of its residents, was incorporated on December 5th, 1966. And?
Whereas Lacey's Historical Commission, Historical Society, city council, and residents recognize the significance of our community's heritage. And?
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, mayor of the City of Lacey, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as, to be Lacey History Month. And further, I encourage all residents to join me in discovering and celebrating Lacey's 170 years of history during this month of May and throughout the year. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, May 5th, 2022. Jen, can you come up and accept this? I always love reading this proclamation because I'm a, I live in the, in the Lacey Historical Neighborhood, so, which is how Lacey first, you know, obviously got started with the first residential plot in Lacey, and it's been such an honor for me to grow up in that neighborhood, born and raised on that neighborhood, with me on one end of the street and Shirley Jezick on the other end of the street. So, I've known Shirley my, my entire life, and so it's been a, been a great honor, and this is always a great proclamation for me to hand out. Jen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We like to do this each May, so we appreciate it.
And next up is our Bicyker, Bicycle Commuter Month. And I'll get started on that as well. Save Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas transportation accounts for about a third of the energy use in Washington State and about half of the CO2 emissions from fossil fuels. And?
Whereas bicycle commuting reduces energy consumption, pollution, parking problems, and traffic congestion. And?
Whereas bicycling makes people healthier and more productive, prevents chronic diseases through physical activity, and supports physical, emotional, and mental well-being. And?
Whereas the City of Lacey has adopted a pedestrian and bicycle plan to prioritize and encourage bicycle and pedestrian trips by providing a safe, well-connected, and convenient bicycle and pedestrian circulation network throughout the city. And?
Whereas the City of Lacey encourages and supports pedestrian and bicycle facilities for our development standards. And?
Whereas InterCity Transit, with sponsors including mini-area businesses and organizations, is hosting the 35th Annual Bicycle Community Challenge during the month of May 2022.
Now, therefore, in recognition of the 65th National Bike Month, I, Andy Ryder, mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, proclaim May 2022 as Bicycle Month in the City of Lacey, and encourage all citizens to consider using active recreation and transportation modes when possible. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, May 5th, 2022. And we had Duncan signed up to accept this. There he is. Can you please unmute yourself?
I'm, I'm now unmuted.
Great. Floor is yours, Duncan.
Thank you. And just for the record, my name is Duncan Green, and I represent InterCity Transit and Thurston County Bicycle Community Challenge, and I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor Ryder and council, for proclaiming May as Bicycle Month in the City of Lacey. And the, the biggest news from here, as you mostly know by now, is that the BCC is now the Bicycle Community Challenge, and all rides count in the BCC, and I'm here to explain just a little bit. Now, in its 35th consecutive year, the Bicycle Community Challenge is the longest-running bike challenge in our region. For three and a half decades, the BCC has been encouraging people in our community to use a bicycle for some of their transportation needs instead of driving. And many things have changed in that time. Our local bicycling infrastructure has improved vastly, and the number of people riding bikes for all reasons has been on the rise as well. The pandemic has brought public health into focus, and bicycling can be an important contributor to public health, as the proclamation states. Building strong communities is also increasingly important with the many challenges that face us at the local level these days. And the way bicycle advocates think about promoting bicycling has also evolved. So, these are some of the reasons that we believe that the more people that ride bicycles in our community, the better it is for everyone, no matter what their reason for riding. And we hope that recreational riding can open the door for some people to try riding for transportation, too. Bicycling for health and fun is beneficial to individual and community health and well-being, and we need those benefits now more than ever. So, this year's theme for the BCC is, is take your vitamin B for bike and bring health to the forefront, along with all the other benefits of riding a bike. Community support for the BCC is strong. Over 100 people turned out for the Earth Day Market Ride a couple Saturdays ago. We already have over 300 people logging rides in the BCC in just the first few days. And most of our previous sponsors are back on board, along with a few new ones, so we have a lot of great prizes, and the BCC coupons are back as well. We have an amazing grand prize, which is a Dream Bike Vacation with Adventure Cycling Association. And we're just going to encourage people to take your vitamin bike and ride in the Bicycle Community Challenge in May to celebrate our 35th year of promoting bicycling in Thurston County. It's easy to participate as an individual or as a member of a team. Just go to bcc.inercitytransit.com to sign up or log into your existing account. Feel free to reach out to me at any time if you have any questions or need help signing up. My email is bgreen@intercitytransit.com, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have as well. So, just wanted to say thanks and happy to take any questions.
Any, any questions from the council? Councilmember Vasquez?
It's not a question, it's just a comment. I wanted to say thank you, Duncan, for your commitment to this awesome program. My daughter and I participated in the Earth Day Ride to the Market on the 23rd of April, and it was amazing to see the turnout. Even after two years of a pandemic, there were so many people who came out. So, I'm participating, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. And for all those listening, hopefully the weather's going to cooperate a little bit more, and we can be able to get out there on our bikes, where I'm sure, like me, and we're sick and, sick of this rain, but thank you for this, and encourage everyone to get out there and get on their bikes this month.
Thanks.
Thank you. So, next up, under Mayor's Report, I just have a, a couple of things I, I want to touch on when it comes to higher education in, in the City of Lacey. The first is South Pierce Sound Community College was just recently recognized as one of the top 25 community colleges in the nation. And so, that is really impressive. They're one of the semifinalists for the Aspen Prize for Cultural They're one of the semifinalists for the Aspen Prize for Community Colleges in Excellence. And there's a million-dollar Aspen Prize, which is at stake. It goes to the top colleges and top community colleges in the nation. And SPSCC has been recognized as that. So Dr. Timothy Stokes is doing just an amazing job. And we've seen how much of a benefit SPSCC has been to the City of Lacey and all their support they've given to Lacey Veteran Services Hub. So good job, SPSCC. And the other issue is that Dr. Roy Hendricks just recently retired. And we were at a celebration last night. The deputy mayor was there and Scott and Rick was there. And he's obviously given so many years of, you know, his leadership to St. Martin's University. And it's been here since 2009 and has seen just a tremendous growth in the university during his tenure. And he's also been a huge supporter of the Lacey Makerspace. And so it was very apt that the Board of Trustees has named the Makerspace the Hendricks Hub for Innovation at the Lacey Makerspace. And that was a great recognition for him last night. And we wish him well in retirement. He's going to be missed. But he's done so much for the St. Martin's University and I was glad that we're there and be able to give him a great send-off. So that's my mayor's report. City manager? And we'll go to standing general committees, General Government and Public Safety Committee.
All right. General Government and Public Safety met on the 26th of April. We had a two-item agenda. First on the agenda was RAC operations and uses. As everyone knows, the regional athletic complex is used heavily for sports, including flag football, softball, baseball, soccer, volleyball, all kinds of sports. But in addition to that, what a lot of people probably don't know is all of the other events that happen at the RAC. So just a few that have happened over the last year or so. The Bairded Collie Dog Show, Fun Runs, Polynesian Festival, Military Appreciation Day. So it's just, it's an incredible facility that's heavily used by the community. And it is maintained by a staff of four full-time regular employees, an additional five temporary full-time, and then five part-time employees. So just hats off to the staff that handle the RAC. It's an amazing facility. And then the second item on the agenda was an update on the BIPOC Business Training Program. That is a program we entered into with the Thurston Economic Development Council. They run a five-week course to help people who are starting new businesses. They have topics such as structuring and licensing, business location, branding and marketing, finance and accounting, business planning. So it's a really, again, a really good program. We've put two, I think they've had two groups go through for a total of 17 participants. And the next session will be starting on April 19th. And that is my report.
Thank you. Now we're on to boards, commissions, and committee reports. I am up first and I do not have a report. Deputy Mayor?
Just one report. EDC, the Economic Development Council, met on April 27th. And we do have a new board member who is Cecilia Lovelace, who was formerly with St. Martin's University, is now with MultiCare and will be joining us as a board member as the mandate, you know, requires that we have someone from that industry on the board. We did go over some labor workforce numbers. And in going over the labor workforce numbers, it was just important to recognize, you know, what the pandemic has done to the workforce. And a lot of people in the 55 and older demographic did not come back to work. A lot of them took retirement. And so what we did see was a return of the, you know, 16 and up. 16 to 19 are the ones who came. More of those came back to work than any other group. My question was, you know, with, most of the times what happens when, you know, when you get to the 55 and up, they're at the top of the pay scale. So are businesses really benefiting from those people retiring? And are they consequently able to hire more or pay more? The numbers are still out, the jury's still out on that. So we might be able to get some of that information next month. But there was a sharp increase in business startups through the pandemic and more non-traditional businesses start up in the pandemic than ever before. So there's a lot of businesses out there doing, you know, products and services that maybe we just didn't have access to before. One of the questions that came up later in the agendas was, did vaccine mandates impact employment? And the answer was no. We did not see a significant impact because people were mandated for vaccines. However, there are some industries where, you know, people transition into another type of work because of the vaccine, but those numbers were less than 2%. Supply was lower than ever, as we all know that, some of you who, and maybe went and battled it out for toilet paper, now understand that the supply went down and that the demand was higher than ever before. And if you saw any financial or economic news today, you'll know that the Fed is trying to combat that with interest rates. And hopefully, you know, I guess the long-term goal is to taper off inflation. We'll see about that. The Center for Business and Innovation Board is seeking two new members. And that information can be found on the Thurston Strong website. Let's see, council member Greenstein already touched on the BIPOC Business Council. And that is my report.
Great, thank you. Yeah, but we saw interest rates jump up here recently and then the Dow took a huge turn today. So the jury's out if we can get this, oh, inflation there control, that's for sure. Next up is, I just want to say Councilmember Cox, she's excused tonight. I think it's been known that her mother passed away and so she's back in Florida. And we're thinking about her and wishing her the best during this difficult time. Councilmember Greenstein?
I have no report.
Councilmember Stedman?
I have no report either, but I will say bringing up SPSCC, that my son is graduating from there this year. He got a scholarship for his good grades and is headed off to Washington State. And everybody knows that my brother passed away earlier this year and today would have been his 60th birthday. He liked wind chimes and so I went out and got a wind chime. So every time I hear it make a noise, then I'll think of him and feel better. So I know depression's a real thing and people go through it and I encourage people to find something that puts a smile on their face instead of a frown and all that. So anyways, that's, I didn't have a report, but I wanted to mention that because I think it's important. People deal with some real heartbreak sometimes. And so, you know, just look for positive ways to make it better. That is my report.
That's very good advice. Councilmember Kunkel?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have two reports, one for Jazzcom. We met on the 2nd, had a few items to cover. Had a budget overview, followed by an explanation of funds being pulled from reserves for a plumbing repair in the facility. And we also filled a vacancy on the board for a nonprofit representative, appointed Jo McGugan, I hope I pronounced that correctly, of female, of feline friends. And we will be planning a Jazzcom retreat in June. For Solid Waste Advisory, we met on the 4th and received a capital facilities project update. We are implementing a new SCADA system upgrade and the construction of that is planned to carry through October. There's also a flare system upgrade coming as the current system is too large in capacity. And that construction will carry out for at least the rest of the year. And we are going to get a new pump system upgrade and that's going to be even longer for estimated completion when we're getting a technology upgrade to include better lighting, security cameras, fencing, and access control. These improvements are all in line with our Workmaster Conceptual Plan to minimize infrastructure on the closed landfill and minimize maintenance issues while expanding customer capacity and improve traffic interaction. We also did a legislative post-session review. The policy and legislative goals we had for infrastructure funding, product design, stewardship policy, and the ability to resist unfunded mandates for performance did not appear to be met legislatively. Concerns moving forward was the passing of House Bill 1663, reducing methane emissions from landfills and House Bill 1799 concerning organic materials management as both bills are unfunded mandates. And that is my report.
Councilmember Vasquez?
I just have one report. InterCity Transit was canceled. There was a meeting scheduled yesterday and they canceled it for lack of agenda items. And then we have the Olympic Regional Clean Air Agency meeting next week, but they're going to take up the issue of campfires in homeless encampments. So there will be some discussion on the policy related to that. And then TRPC is tomorrow, so I have no report. Can I just share, though?
Please.
One other event that I attended. I went to the electric vehicle meeting event that was on the weekend. It was at Olympia High School. And there were a host of people who had electric vehicles who were there just demoing their electric cars and a lot of information about tax exemptions and other benefits that are, that come along with purchasing an electric vehicle. And I shared some information about how Lacey had recently put forth a policy where new developments are going to have electric vehicle chargers included in them and everybody was really excited about that. So they're going to have some folks at the Lacey Fun Fair as well and they encouraged anybody with an electric car, a couple council members perhaps, should attend because they should have a special parking area for people with electric vehicles.
That's great. Well, with that, we've reached the end of the agenda, but before I go?
Hey, Andy?
Yep, go ahead.
Hey, so I noticed, Robin, we went to the Veterans HubCon, the Comic-Con thing at the Veterans Center. I wasn't there very long, but Robin was there a lot longer than me. It was good to see that a lot of veterans were participating in that, so much so we had to get extra chairs and stuff like that. But it was really cool because they taught people how to publish their own books, not necessarily comic book or whatever. But it was really good to see a full turnout and, and obviously Robin there, too. So I just wanted to bring that up since she just triggered my memory there.
Yeah, that was a great event.
Well, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. But before I go, a couple things. This Sunday is Mother's Day. So guys, you have 48 hours to figure out a gift between now and Sunday. But I have a couple very special mothers in my life. The mother of my children, Liberty Hetzler, thank you for all you do for our family. And of course, my wife, has two beautiful girls. And we're going to go see one of them graduate tomorrow. Or we're heading over tomorrow to Wazoo to see her graduate. So I'll be in Wazoo this weekend. So Happy Mother's Days to all your wonderful mothers out there. I had a wonderful mother in my life who raised me and I think about her all the time. And this is also going to be my last council meeting for this month. The deputy mayor is going to be taking over for me. I'm headed to our sister city in Poland, in Minsk Masiewetski. And so this will be my third time over there. We're going to celebrate their 600th anniversary as a city. We're going to, we were trying to go over there end of this time last year, which would be the beginning of their 600th anniversary. But of course, we had COVID and so they said, well, we're going to celebrate all year long and we'll invite you at the end of the year. And so I've been trying to get my, you know, liver prepared to go back over to Poland. And so wish me luck with that. And, but I do want to have a big, you know, shout-out to our sister city. They've taken in over 1,000 refugees from Ukraine. They're doing all that, you know, just out of their own general fund. I'm really proud of our sister city association, which put together a fundraiser and has already sent them several thousand dollars. And we got a really nice letter from the mayor saying, thank you, City of Lacey, thank you all those people who contributed every single penny of that contribution. It's going to go straight to help the refugees. They're not going to spend it on anything else but helping those refugees. And so I look forward to seeing the mayor and several council members who I've been coming close with over the years. But with that, I've, we've reached the end of our agenda. As always, you keep it classy, Lacey. I'll see you in June and I'll call us meeting adjourned.
Good night, everyone.